The City of Apache Junction, Council Work Session to order. Roll call.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Present.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Here.
Councilmember Gremmle?
Here.
Councilmember Nessar?
Here.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Here.
Do you have a form, Your Honor?
Thank you. I'd like to combine the presentations for items number one and two, ordinance number 1508, and resolution number 21-30, related to non-residential use regulations and non-residential bulk regulations. Nick?
Thank you, Mayor Wilson. Good evening, Council. So tonight, I just want to review the text amendment case AM-1-21, the revisions to the commercial land use table. So we met regarding this last month, and in reviewing the amendments, there were some, there were a few items that we wanted to look into further, as we discussed with our stakeholders and interested property owners. So because of that, we continued it till now, of course. So the three main items that we identified, and there's smaller items within such, is reevaluating some of the B3 downtown land uses, clarifying some language, especially regarding one of the footnotes. And there was some questions about outdoor amplified music and conditional use permits, and we just wanted to touch on the research and the findings that we've had since then. So first, regarding the reevaluation of the B3 land uses. Looking at it, all the uses that were identified within the meeting, we went into further. A lot of them were those that were brought up by one of the big stakeholders, as Carl Huish got up and he gave a presentation. He spoke about what they, especially because they're a significant landowner, they spoke about what they believed would fit, and out of respect, we reincorporated and we worked and tried to figure out what would work best. And in some senses, our staff recommendation still stands, and in others, they're like, "Okay, I think that this is a better way to do that." Some things that, for example, printing shops, like a FedEx or Kinko's, or offices in general, whether it's a physician's office or like a lawyer's office, have been amended to be just permitted by right. That's kind of how they originally were, and as we were trying to figure out, originally it was going to be like a yes with certain conditions, and it kind of seemed a little bit too burdensome, as we discussed when we had our discussion. And so generally, we changed that yes with a footnote to just yes by right. Auto parts sales and appliance repair, they are permitted when incidental to a permitted primary use, like for example, take an Apple store, where you have, that is primary retail of like a cellphone, but they do appliances. And it wasn't that, they were never meant to be prohibited, but just in order to clarify the language, these things were given the yes in this instance, and with this condition. Just to be clear, and I'll talk more about that in the next slide, as we get into the footnote itself. Staff recommendation regarding car washes, auto repair shops, nurseries and greenhouses and antique stores have not changed, so right now, those are a no, for various reasons, and I can go into them as much as we might want to talk about. And vehicle showrooms were something that we had a brief discussion on, which is, the idea was like the Tesla showrooms that they have in the mall, and we tried to consider all the different ways that it could be done. There was proposal to limit it maybe to a certain square footage, or to have all these different stipulations. But as we further researched, and we discussed it with other municipalities, and it kind of became clear that even when these malls have these showrooms, essentially, they still have a lot maybe behind the mall or something, because people wanted to test drive it. And the line just kind of became more and more gray into what the difference was between these vehicle showrooms and a standard motor vehicle dealership, other than the amount of cars. And there was news articles and reports that said that Tesla's, they don't think it's really working for them, they're going for parking lots again. And so in general, with this kind of discouraging news about this whole retail experiment, we believe, staff believes, that it's best to just keep that motor vehicle showroom category within the broader motor vehicle dealer category, which is a no in the B3 downtown district. And again, that only refers to this kind of crimson area right here. As for the clarification on the language, footnote six, which was the footnote regarding accessory uses, has been changed to read noted uses shall, well, as written right there. So the new text clarifies more that this is specifically about when retailer services are an accessory use to a permitted primary use. Mayor Wilson, you talked about, for example, a feed store. A feed store, and feed and fertilizer store is like one category right there, and while we don't necessarily want like a fertilizer depot, things like feed and fertilizer are commonly sold within like a larger retail development, such as Fry's or Walmart. And we reworked this text, as well as where this footnote is used, just to be clear, that a lot of these retail uses and services, when they are part of this kind of broader retail use, are permitted, they are allowed. We're not trying to say, Fry's, you can only sell this, this, and this. It's more about the primary uses, which the, that the use table is concerned with. And so we believe that by working this text in this way, it's more clear about the intent. These things are still within zoning administrator's interpretation, but essentially, we're not trying to kind of go through a retail center's inventory and say this, or this, or this, or this. So in some places, things have changed, just to reflect, it's like a yes with a six, just to show that this, that type, whether it's like bottled gas, is permitted, like a Fry's will sell propane tanks, but the, like a propane tank store in and of itself is not a allowed use as a standalone. So that's what that text has been reworked to incorporate. The third item, Councilmember Biggs had talked about that, and talked about the concern that maybe we were over-regulating or over-hars when, with how we use the conditional use permits, and this was something that the code currently, has currently in place, and as he suggested to maybe modify that, we did a little bit more research and a bit more digging, and so we looked into it. And staff still recommends keeping the conditional use permit requirement for outdoor amplified music, checking with other municipalities, one of which was Gilbert, talking about Whiskey Row specific, they brought up Whiskey Row, actually. And they said that while they do have noise ordinance, like we do, to kind of try and control these things, what they ran into actually, and this is something that might bear discussion later on, is that the biggest problem was actually bass levels, which are different from the decibel levels that our ordinance regulates. Decibel just being like the volume of like the standard music, but the bass levels, which can go undetected by the decibel readers that we use, are, is the force of music that will end up shaking someone's house in the neighborhood around it. And so in that sense, until we kind of come up with a proper solution to kind of deal with that issue, we believe that it would be better to keep the conditional use permit requirement that we already have, just so that there's that extra level of protection, so that the Planning and Zoning Commission and the council, if it appealed to, would have the opportunity to put conditions on there, to just make sure that if loud amplified outdoor music is going on, that there's some sort of remedy or some sort of solution that we can work out with conditions. So in that sense, we suggest it stays, or recommend, I should say. With that, tomorrow, we will be going over both the resolution number 21-30, which will adopt the amendments as a public record, and the ordinance number 1508, which will use that document to replace the current Article 1-5-3 and Article 1-5-4. And that's what we are looking at tomorrow within the public hearing.
Okay, we got any questions?
I do, Your Honor.
Go ahead.
So regarding the amplified noise, and I understand bass levels aren't covered, so then what would happen if we left it as staff recommends, and we get a business like a Whiskey Row, who has a CUP, has to follow the noise ordinances, all that, but then has issues like bass that fall outside of the noise ordinance, outside of the decibel readings, outside of their CUP even, are they in jeopardy of potentially having their CUP ripped from them, or taken back to the authorizing body?
So with the way the law is currently written, no. And I say that because this is probably something we'll have to look more into in the future. As these ordinances have developed, this is a kind of legal gray area that hasn't been addressed by the current ordinance. So there is no current remedy to say no, because our ordinance does not, does not calculate bass levels. So with that in mind, I think moving forward, until we might address this within the noise ordinance, it might be wise to include that as a condition within a conditional use permit, to regulate the bass levels and not just the decibel levels. So let's say like a restaurant already exists, and none of that language is there. The way it is right now, we would probably just try and work with them to find a solution, because the, because the noise ordinance and our conditional use permits regarding this up till now have not addressed bass levels, and those are the conditions whereon like a permit would be revoked or not. Since that's not one of the items, can, like, that's not one of the things that they could be revoked on right now, it would just be something we would work out.
So we could still then potentially set a condition to regulate the bass levels, even though we have the noise ordinance, so that there's that added layer of protection for both sides, really?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes?
I just have one question. On the original letter, with the uses that the landowners were asking for, the one thing it said was appliance sales. Well, when you think about it like a Spencer's, why would, we wouldn't object to a Spencer's, but on the letter from August 9th, it addresses appliance repair. But do we really want to have just appliance repair as a standalone?
No, I believe it's been a yes with a six, so that it's only as an accessory.
Just as an accessory, okay. I just want to make sure.
Oh, I understand. It's for the same reason you addressed that we considered.
Robert?
Yes, I do have a question, and this is just for clarification.
Yes.
So staff recommended CUP for an outdoor events, like the Whiskey Row for concerts and things. Councilmember Biggs says, "Why do we need the CUP? Just have them fall under to our noise ordinance," which brings us back to today. And staff answers to that is, "No, we still recommend CUP because of a different kind of noise?"
There's more reasons to it than that. The use of the conditional use permit is to allow, well, the question was, do we just leave it to the noise ordinance itself to regulate, or are there other factors to consider with the use of conditional use permit? With use of conditional use permit, the Planning and Zoning Commission has a little bit more influence in being able to determine, like, let's say, for example, with Whiskey Row, this was something that was brought up previously, they worked with the city in order to make sure, before they realized that the bass levels were even a problem, they had the Whiskey Row open up to the street, because all the residences are facing, are on the east side, and this opening is on the west side. And so as part of the city process, they were able to work with them in order to kind of create a form that was more amenable to the area and the surrounding. It just happened to be that they discovered other problems later. But the use of conditional use permit allows us to kind of have that compromise, to be able to work with them if there's other conditions necessary. Sometimes, sometimes it could be something specific about the way it operates, hours of operation, things that aren't, and things that aren't strictly noise-based, the conditional use permit addresses and allows for planning and zoning.
More control.
Into, yeah.
And the way people run their business.
To an extent.
The only thought I have on that, and I don't have any questions, this whole thing about the noise ordinance, we already have one. I'm not certain we should be treating these restaurants, the ones that would have outdoor music, any different than any other restaurant.
I agree.
I mean, at this point right now, the CUP is making an assumption that there's something wrong.
Mm-hmm.
And we don't know that there's anything wrong, because you yourself have said, "We don't know how to measure, we don't have the equipment or whatever to measure decibel levels of what's too loud, or whatever, with bass, or sounds, or whatever." So there's an assumption that something's wrong, that we don't know what it even is.
Yep.
So why are we placing an extra burden on these businesses? Why doesn't CUPs apply to all business, all restaurants then? You know, or either have a CUP for all of them, or none of them?
I agree.
I agree.
Well, if I could offer some input, the difference is, it's not specifically restaurants that have like an opening like this, for instance, it, they could come in without use of a CUP. It is for the outdoor activity and outdoor amplified music, that aspect of it requires the conditional use permit.
But why? You don't know that there's a problem. So why place an extra burden on them, other than any other restaurant, because we don't know that there's a problem?
Your Honor. And I would add to that same point, if we're really talking about outdoor, it's with amplified outdoor music. So to say that the addition of a CUP is beyond amplified music is contradictory to what's in the, to what you're proposing. It specifically says restaurants, bars, clubs, with amplified outdoor music. That amplified outdoor music falls under our noise ordinance, which stops that music at 10 o'clock. Now, I understand bass levels, and there are certain things that, that we may need to eventually go back and look at from a policy standpoint to our noise ordinance, but we cannot treat businesses differently, and I think that Whiskey Row is a great example. You said it yourself, and I heard it when I talked to Gilbert as well, they worked with the business to say, "Hey, we've got residential to the east, let's put you westward facing, so noise is going west out onto the street that's going to be busy and have noise versus going east." I think there are things that we can do to be more business-friendly, work with that on a staff level, than like Robert said, putting undue regulation or burden on a business owner who's just trying to open up and run their business.
So the Plan Commission just approved a wedding venue that has outdoor music, and we worked with them. We actually had a recess during the middle of the Plan Commission meeting to work with them, but they are in a residential area because it's outdoor activity. Who thought, "Well, you're going to have a wedding, it's going to be inside mostly, but it's going to be a nice day someday, it's not going to be 118, and maybe you want to have outdoor music amplified or not." And so we worked with that person during the conditional use permit process to focus on what the neighbor concern is. So that is in an area that's on Old West Highway, that has more RSGR lots, those will be the people that we'll get the calls from. So I think we have a lot of experience with noise, whether it's fillies, whether it's hitching post, outdoor amplified music, whether there's bass or not, can create a problem in neighborhood, in neighborhood downtown revitalization, Tempe is having this problem. So downtown is going to change, we're adding right now on the books about over 1,000 residential units, which is a good thing. All this has to live in harmony. So we think the conditional use permit is a good way to balance the city interests, the neighborhood interests, and the entrepreneur's interest.
But then wouldn't we want to say, because we're talking about the business district, B1 through B5, shouldn't we be addressing that then to saying that that would only apply when they're within a certain distance of residences that are in those areas? Because if there's no residences in there, why should they need a CUP?
Yep.
To have an outdoor music in a, in a business district if there's no residences anywhere within a mile away, or whatever?
I agree.
They're coming, though.
Residents are going to be there, so.
But.
Again, it's your policy decision, it's how you want to write the ordinance. Right now, all outdoor activities require a CUP. So again, us reaching out to other cities, our experience shows that when you have these entertainment areas, outdoor restaurant amplified music, you end up having conflicts with adjacent residential uses, so you have to balance that. Hours of operation, those are the things you can do with a CUP. You can figure out whether it's, you know, Sunday night, no music, those are things you can work with a restaurant owner as to whether they're, they're going to have outdoor amplified music certain days a week, or they're going to cut it off at a certain time.
Let's just ban Danley.
So it basically just allows us to ask the questions of the business owner, so we can say, you know, "What is your intent in terms of music, or, or anything else, right, under that CUP? Could it be lighting? Could it be..."
Yeah, this, under the CUP process, this Planning Commission has to have findings of facts. So you go, if you go back to our ordinance, and you look at our ordinance, there are, I think, A through F, where the Plan Commission goes through findings of facts to make sure that a proposed activity fits in the neighborhood, whatever that neighborhood is, whether it's a rural neighborhood, or whether it's a downtown neighborhood.
Then why don't we ask, just put, all restaurants have to have a CUP?
Because they don't have outdoor amplified music.
But there's other things, you just said, it could be other things besides music.
Hours of, so the activity that we're trying to get after is the outdoor amplified music. The fact that they have doors that open, that's not a big deal. Not every single use requires a CUP in the city, some are permitted uses. So historically, the city has said outdoor uses, whatever they may be, need a CUP. If you want to change that, that's fine, I'm just saying that normally, what we have done here is, if you have an outdoor activity that we think there's going to be neighborhood conflict, then it's a CUP. And that, there's a process for that, and there's an appeal process for that.
Gail?
But this CUP for the amplified music, doesn't it entail more than just the sound itself, like a fenced area separate from the parking lot? The lighting, the exits, there's more to it than just the sound, correct?
Yes, it's the direction of the sound, it's what sound attenuation you can use. We hear all the time noise about car washes, about speakers from fast food restaurants right next to residential areas. A lot of cities, you have to have special use permits just to have a squawk box next to your whatever fast food. So we know that, we're trying to avoid these neighborhood conflicts.
And so what I'm saying, if they want to have outdoor music, it's not that we're targeting them because they're having outdoor music, there's other factors, like the fence, the lighting, the direction, there's more to it than just, "I want to play music outside." That's what I'm.
Yes, there's outdoor activity, if you, yes.
It's not just the limiting because of the music, it's because they're outside, and there's other safety factors involved.
The wedding venue, for example, is an outdoor activity, there's no restaurant there. There's a chapel for the service, but they could have the service outside. There is an entertainment venue, but maybe they want to have music outside, but just for the fact that they had outdoor activity.
Triggers it.
Triggers it. Whether there was amplified music or not, for that particular use.
It predicates it based off the fact of amplified outdoor whatever. Now, the, comparing the situation with the recently approved wedding venue, they're going into an already established residential neighborhood, the residents were there first. We're talking about undeveloped land, where the business could be first, and in a mixed use zone, you have to know what you're moving into. That's buyer's due diligence. If you live above a bar or a restaurant, you have to know that you moved in above a bar or a restaurant. The same thing as we've said all across the city, that you buy a house across the street from a vacant commercial zone, and all of a sudden, a commercial zone comes in, it was there, you should have known that. Basing this off of, off of that, I don't feel sympathy in what goes in down there, because people are going to be aware of the zoning that's there. They know what they're moving into, they know how they're going in, be it in that, in that square parcel, or over in, on the Grand Hotel site, they know what's going on over there.
Exactly.
And we're basing this strictly off of amplified noise.
No.
Outside, and it's more than parking, those things we can already, already talk about. The noise ordinance, you got to knock it off at 10, you got to lower it down. If certain things aren't covered, that's a different policy conversation. We can open that noise ordinance back up. There's other policy conversations that we can have there. This is specifically targeting businesses and making it harder.
Yep.
For them to operate.
I do not believe that at all, that we do not target any business. We got to make it compatible for the entire city, but, and I understand what you're saying about the noise, don't get me wrong, but there's more to it than that. And even if they open up on the South 40, and there is absolutely nothing around it, depending on the venue that they want to have outside, we have to know that this is separate from the parking lot, and all of those are the issues that the CUP takes care of.
One of the points I wanted to make is that we have nearly 500 units proposed, that they're waiting for this ordinance to be approved, hopefully tomorrow night, they can move forward with their roughly 450 units. They also have acquired this property, which they'll, will do residential. So it may not be the case that the commercial comes first, it may be that the residential comes first. So this 17-acre parcel, this 17-acre parcel, about five or six, will be commercial. This has been slated for several hundred units, so it may not be the case that the commercial comes first.
Larry, the zoning is there, I'm sorry. If you move into a downtown district, and you don't know that there's going to be loud noise, or, or, that's like moving into downtown Phoenix across the street from the stadium, and not knowing that there's sports games every weekend. I mean, come on.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Tonight is a policy discussion, it's not any decisions, it's your policy, how you all want to do it. Remember a few years back when Superstition Harley came in? The original owner decided to have events, and decided to have outdoor music. This room was filled. This is only a tool that staff is recommending, doesn't have to have it, just, just wanting you to know. I don't know how, what we would have ever done if the new owner of Superstition Harley wanted to continue to do all the, all the events, but I don't know if anybody remembers that time. So this is just an opportunity to have that CUP. The CUP's done at the P&amp;Z level, but it's staff recommendation, I don't know what else to say about it, but you guys can, it's your policy, if you change it tomorrow, we're great, too, so.
And it would not necessarily be that the noise ordinance, or the noise itself would trigger the CUP, there could be other issues involved as well, correct?
But Gail, if that's.
Depending, so if you're opening a brand-new venue versus in an existing building, say, where it's already happened, just say, what is it, Terradiddles? Okay, they had music before. Did they have to go through a lot of hoops? I mean, they.
I don't believe they've had outdoor music, but if they want to turn their patio and have outdoor music, they would, that's an outdoor activity that would require a CUP.
Your Honor?
Yes, I'm just going to call on you.
Totally agree with everything that Brayden and Tess have said, and using Terradiddles as an example, I mean, at what point do we support the businesses? I understand the neighbors, but exactly what Brayden said, looking down south, people have got to know, we have this issue all the time, moving in next to horse property, and then complaining about the flies and the smells.
Mm-hmm.
I just want to, I absolutely agree with what Tess and Brayden said, and I, I'll leave it at that.
Okay, any other comments?
No, still, I'm going back, if you look here on this chart, it's got bars, breweries, brew pubs, and tasting rooms. Yes, yes, and yes for B1, B2, and B3. But if they add amplified music, and it doesn't say anything else, Gail, it just says amplified music, now all of a sudden, they have to have a CUP. So we're not, it's saying here, they're not talking about anything else but amplified music outdoors.
Outdoors.
Right.
Outdoors is.
But other issues. So regular restaurants can do all kinds of stuff outside, if it's not amplified music, and they don't need a CUP, because that's what this says.
Olive Garden.
They can have an outdoor sitting area, just like an outdoor smoking area. To accommodate the smoking law change, we have all sorts of outdoor sitting areas.
Did we need a CUP for Dutch Brothers? They have outdoor music that plays, because I can hear it from my friend's house who lives with an eyesight.
Do they complain about it?
Mm-hmm, they do.
They do, they're not, that's not considered outdoor amplified music, that's like live music, is the way we've, but we, if there's a complaint, we'll act on it.
So something on a speaker, that's just music piped through that might be outside, is not considered amplified?
That is, I don't know the answer to that question right off the top of my head here. That is, I don't know the answer to that question right off the top of my head here, but it's not what we're considering tonight. We're talking about live music outside, or a DJ, or something that.
But that's not what this says.
Yes, outdoor amplified music is what.
Yeah, but that doesn't mean it's live. Could be off of a radio.
Yes, true.
So then any business that has music outside, we should really start.
It's like Sonic, you mean?
Sonic, I mean, Olive Garden plays music outside around there.
We've got it.
Soon as we get an Olive Garden, we'll make them get a CUP.
Or we can just not.
So, Your Honor. That's all we have. I think this is your discussion at this point, so.
I just have one, one question. So like, let's just take an average, we'll take Terradiddles, for example. They decided to throw a cornhole tournament outside with, with just the jukebox playing. That's no cause for CUP.
They can have so many outdoor events as special events, I think it's four, that they just get a special event permit throughout.
So it just.
And if they're going to serve alcohol in the parking lot, then obviously they would need a special event liquor license. But for occasional activities, like we've done with the VFW and the Elks, they all have those outdoor events that are seasonal, periodic, several times a year.
So special events versus every Friday, Saturday, Sunday nights?
Correct. Yeah, we have a process for special events.
So if they're like, hey, we want a cornhole tournament every Saturday on our back patio, that's.
CUP.
That's CUP.
CUP, correct.
Amplified music, CUP. Operate your business, CUP.
Okay. All right, thank you. So I'm going to combine items number three, four, and five related to the Superstition Vista's development south of 60, east of Meridian, and north of SR 24 alignment, which includes the master plan community zoning, as well as the associated documents related to development agreements, financing, creation of the community facilities, district policy. Bryant, you're first.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I'll kick this one off and then we'll go through the staff here, but I'm very excited to introduce this item tonight. This has been many, many months and many, many years of work for many, many folks. And tonight, I'd like to start off with recognizing the teams on the city side and then on the private side, and then I'm going to turn it over to Sidney to talk about the zoning. So many of you may or may not know, but Rudy's middle name is Annexation. He is Rudy Annexation Eschevius. And Rudy, have my huge heartfelt thanks in working through the annexation process with our folks from the, from the state land department. That meeting that took place a couple of years ago, just to have the opportunity to annex, was key in this, it was a big chapter in this, in this process. So, and on the zoning side, it's been Sidney, Larry, and Rudy, who have been the core team on helping us through the existing zoning that we, we have here versus where we're headed now. And Sidney has been our project manager, from the staff end, so air traffic control foreman leader, Sidney, thank you. He's taken on a whole bunch, and I appreciate all that he's done to help carry this through and keep us moving forward. Another team that I want to mention is our infrastructure team. So when you first start talking about how, and how much, and how much land, and what are we looking at, well, a lot of it depending on what can we serve and how do we best serve and do it the best way possible. Darren England at the sewer district, Mike Loggins, water district, and Mike Weaver are key, key folks who have been instrumental in giving us the expertise and the confidence that's been needed to carry this through. Thank you, gentlemen. And Emil Schmidt, our city engineer as well, on the transportation and drainage side. Joel and Matt Busby, thank you so much as well on that key infrastructure team. That team was probably the first team that was set up to start working on, on this, on this, on this effort. Another word that, another team is the community facility district team, which corresponds with the infrastr, the, the infrastructure, but the financing of this project. Super huge shout out to our finance director, Leslie, Darren, Mike, Matt, Joel, and Zach, who is our, our legal counsel. We haven't done a CFD like this ever, and we appreciate all the expertise from that end. And then when you go kind of the next step of what's going to be down there, how are we going to interact from public agency side? We started looking at how do we organize a development agreement and how it connects to our development impact fees. The team has been working so closely together and so well together. Pam from our library, Liz Legaback from Parks and Rec, Chief Kelly, Mike Weaver, Mike Loggins, Leslie again, Matt, Larry, Rudy, Sidney, Janine. From a city perspective, to be able to give the insights, to be able to, to help the developers and the private side to know what our needs are and what we were looking at. And then from my end, I want to give a big thanks to the development team, the folks from D.R. Horton, Brookfield, Mark Edelman, Lisa Atkins at the state land department, and everyone that's been involved has just been first-class project and, and with a mind eye towards getting us to the point where we could adopt major items in, in, in this, in this city. Ten months ago was the auction, but prior to that, this community has laid a foundation of a vision and hope of what would be down to their southern boundary and how we would interact with our major regional partners like Mesa and Queen Creek. And it's been a really great coordinated effort that our fellow cities have worked so well together here. So at this point, Your Honor, I just wanted to say thank you to our teams. Like I said, it's been a really big effort. Our community has supported a master, a general plan that supports a master plan community to the south for two decades. They voted overwhelmingly yes to help make this happen, and so that establishes your general plan, or I call master plan for the future. So with that, Sidney, are you ready? Let's get going and have some fun tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Sidney Arias, one of the planners on staff. Tonight, I'm really going to be providing a high-level overview of the auction and retained NPCs. So a bit of context, as Brian mentioned, the Arizona State Land Department had an auction on November 4th of 2020. At that time, it auctioned 2,800 acres. As a successful bidder of the auction, D.R. Horton was tasked to rezone a larger area, approximately 8,100 acres. Those 8,100 acres are known as the site. The site is made up of the original 2,800 acres and the remainder of that acreage known as the retained property. At the time of the auction and up to now, portions of the auction property and the retained property were located in unincorporated Pinell County. D.R. Horton has requested annexation of these areas, and the annexation process started on December 22nd of 2020. At a later date, D.R. Horton partnered with Brookfield Residential Properties to, to develop approximately half of the auction property, and we have an exhibit that will, will note that split. The review of the MPC plans by staff started in April of this year. Here we have an exhibit that shows the boundaries of the site, the boundaries of the auction property noted in gray, and our new city limit that will extend down to the 24. And then from east-west, it'll be from Meridian to the Cap Canal. Currently, our city limits stop at Elliott. So tonight, you have the hard copies of each of the MPC's plans in front of you. You may have noticed that the MPC plans differ in size. The reason for that is because of the number of documents that are in, in each of the MPC plans. The, the auction MPC includes a, more of a detailed second layer of, of planning, which is called a development unit plan. The retained parcel does not have a development unit plan. When the state land auctions future development units or future land, the winner of that auction will provide the city staff to, city staff development unit plans at, at that time. Both of those, all of those development unit plans will need to be in compliance with the MPCs. So really, what is the MPC? You could, you could really think of, of the MPCs as, as two new zoning ordinance, really, that cover a range of topics. They cover land use budgets, permitted uses, street sections, park standards, landscape and wall standards. It covers really everything within those MPC documents. It's a really 500 pages of new regulatory language. Now, what do those, these MPCs really facilitate? For the auction property, it facilitates two development units and approximately 11,000 new homes and about 450,000 square feet of non-residential development on the auction property. For the retained property, it's a development of six development units, approximately 16,000 new dwelling units on, on that portion, and about 9.5 million square feet of non-residential development. So here we have a pen-to-paper example of that new regulatory language. As previously mentioned, D.R. Horton and Brookfield Residential have partnered. D.R. Horton is taking the west half and Brookfield is taking the east half of the auction property. Here we have an example of the proposed street networks, park locations, commercial locations, and locations for potential public facilities. In terms of public outreach, both the development team and city staff has sent out approximately 950 notification letters for owners that reside within 300 feet. The development team has also held three in-person neighborhood meetings, one on June 14th, the second one on June 23rd, and the third on August 4th. A virtual meeting was also held on, on June 16th. At those meetings, approximately 60 people showed up, and they were, they were generally expressed support of the project. Questions resided in infrastructure improvements, the timing of the SR 24, proposed community amenities, and, and home prices. Those were very common questions. Staff has only, at this time, staff has only received one question, one call from a city of Mesa residence, and they were inquiring when houses will be sold. They wanted, I think their, I think they mentioned their son-in-law to be able to purchase a home near them. Most recently, at our planning commission, we had four residents at the city of Mesa that expressed similar questions, and they were answered at that public hearing. Both of the MPCs were heard by the planning commission through two work sessions, one in May, one in August, and most recently, last week on 9/14th, where the planning commission recommended approval of both MPCs. Tonight is the first of two work sessions. The next work session will be on 10/4. At that work session date, the applicant and the development team will provide an overview of the MPC plans and provide a presentation, more detailed presentation on their, on their efforts. And then we'll be back on 10/5, the next day, for consideration of the MPCs. That concludes my presentation. I'm here if you have any questions, and so are other members of staff.
Okay.
I just have one, and I just want to clarify in regards to the develop, there was a screen that showed the two, the retained property, and yes, that one.
This one here?
Uh, one back.
This.
Too far. One more, right, one more. So we're only, yes, we're talking about the larger-scale project, but what's being developed by D.R. Horton and Brookfield is the auctioned property, not the retained property that has not been sold yet. So while that may come in two years, 10 years, whatever, that's just more or less saying what is going to be allowed to go down there, correct?
Councilmember Biggs, that is correct.
Thank you.
Gail?
No.
Robert?
I'd just like to say that over the months, this whole undertaking, I don't think could have been handled any better. I think you guys did a great job.
Thank you, Councilmember Schroeder.
And I would agree with Councilmember Schroeder. A lot of hard work's gone into this. Thank you.
Krista?
I reiterate that, and, and go Rudy. Thank you to all the staff, but that's awesome, and, and I really appreciate that Bryant took the time to name all of the individuals. That, that's great. Ten months, that's great.
And we're looking forward.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. Okay, resolutions supporting.
Your Honor, we, we would like to take another minute just to have Joel's over, it won't take too, but Joel has a little bit, you're still.
All right.
And Zach.
And Zach, for CFDs, we just have a couple pieces.
You thought you were done on this, didn't you?
Yeah.
We were trying to.
Well.
Didn't you cover this in an email?
That was a long email.
Yeah. Emails.
Yeah, there's, there's so many pieces in this, and it's a, it's a big puzzle. And the developer and the city worked together to solve these problems. It was, I think, I think I put down excruciating negotiation. I think that's the term I used. And it was, it was pretty intense at times. They would probably agree. They might have some other words for it, but it was, it was done very well. And also the state land department, awesome. The other parts of this, and I'll just mention them briefly, and then I'm going to turn it over to Zach. He gets the, the funnest part, because that's the math. And I'm an attorney, I don't do math well, although he's an attorney, he does math very well, so. There's the annexation, which we've already talked about, there's the equivalency ordinance that goes with the annexation. We already talked about the MPC. There's the PPAs, that's a procedural, basically the former development agreement. Then there's the development agreement. Then there's the CFD, Community Facilities District Papers, documents, there's the Water Services and Sewer documents, and those are service agreements and IGAs. What is a development agreement? Somebody might ask, or maybe you don't want to ask, but it's under ARS 9-500.05. That authorizes the city to enter into development agreements. What does it cover? Well, first, it says the document will be effective after annexation. You have to pass the annexation first. Must be consistent with the general plan. Is amendable in writing, gets recorded? And the, just like zoning, it's not good until 30 days later. You can't use an emergency clause to pass it. And also, what does it address? Well, the duration. So for the auction property, 2056 is how long it will go till. Retained property, 2066. The uses, those are covered in the master plan community, as is the density, heights, lot sizes, setbacks, bulk uses, and other similar accessory items. Dedication of public, right away. Dedication of public parks, police, library. Phasing, how long will it take and how long can the developer have to have individual development units? The public infrastructure, the reimbursement, Zach will go over that, that's the CFD part. How the CFDs are set up, he will also go over that. Page two. There are master reports that are referenced. So those are documents that are very, very important. They're, they're kind of fluid, but they are guiding, they are governing. That's the nonpotable water plan, the drainage plan, the transportation plan, the wastewater plan. Those are the details for the planning, the engineering, the design, the construction, the acquisition, the installation, and the infrastructure improvements, and many, and many other things. There's other things that are covered in these development agreements, generally at-risk grading, assurances, dedication and warranties, drainage, development fees, credits, how that all works together. For the auction property, what's the developer going to do for the city? What will the city accept on library, police, and parks? Same with the retained property, there's certain items for those particular components. There's also the usual legal stuff, indemnification, insurance, mediation remedies. What happens if there's a dispute between a city department director? What's the next step to appeal that? That goes to the city manager. What happens if there's a default on the agreement? What happens if there's another pandemic? And does that slow down construction? How's that work? There's going to be homeowners associations involved. Architectural reviews for the types of housing that, and that's all in the MPC. Assignments. So the auction property is essentially D.R. Horton that has purchased the property. However, there's going to be an assignment for part of it, and that's going to go to Brookfield and other developers. So that, that's just a general summary of the auction property and the retained property development agreements. Are there any questions?
Krista, do you have any questions?
No, Your Honor, thank you for asking.
So now, I think Zach would like to speak a little bit on what a CFD is, what will happen, how there's reimbursement, what the estimated cost of a new homeowner will be over time.
Thank you, Joel. Mayor, Counsel, my name is Zach Sakis. I've had the pleasure of serving as Counsel of the City as we have started on this potential formation of two Community Facilities Districts in this exciting development happening potentially, if annexation happens, potentially happening in Apache Junction. So the, on, on October 5th, Mayor and Counsel will be asked to consider three resolutions, and I'm going to give a, a high overview of those three resolutions, and then hope to make it conversational if you have questions, to be available for questions. The first one, the last time I had the pleasure of seeing you, was in February, and the city adopted policies and procedures related to the formation of Community Facilities Districts. In March, some statutory amendments were enacted into law, and so the first item related to CFDs to be considered on October 5th will relate to updating the city's CFD policies to conform with the statutory amendments. The, the main change that happened with the statutory amendments was a change in the required Board of Directors, or an option, excuse me, not required, but an option in who can serve as Board of Directors for a Community Facilities District. The two additional resolutions will address formation of Community Facilities District, Superstition Community Facilities District Number One and Superstition Vista's Community Facilities District Two. I'm going to address formation of both of those because they will be substantially similar, and from time to time, I'll try to point out the differences between the two districts. And just in case I get going too fast, a homeowner will only live within the boundaries of one district and only be subject to the property taxes of one district. So you will not, a, a potential new Apache Junction resident will not have a property tax charged by both CFD Number One and CFD Number Two. It will be one or the other. Related to the resolutions that will be presented to Mayor and Counsel on October 5th for formation of the two CFDs, you'll receive additional information, or you may have it in front of you. The landowners have provided a petition required by statute, which says, "We're asking you, Mayor and Counsel, to consider formation of a Community Facilities District." The landowners, landowners in addition, and in accordance with the statute, provide a general plan, which is broad intentionally to list all the types of infrastructure that will be constructed within this development. The petitioners have also provided applications. Those applications include details about the character of development, proposed tax impact of the Community Facilities Districts, proposed timelines of, of finishing projects, which dov, which will dovetail very nicely with the material Sydney presented on earlier. Finally, the, the last document included in your, in your packets for October 5th related to approval of the CFDs is a CFD development agreement. The CFD statutes are intentionally very broad to permit these separate political subdivisions, right? These are not a Department of the City, they're a separate political subdivision, as you're well familiar with, with the Water Utilities District. Those statutes are broad. How do we narrow or constrain the focus of what these Community Facilities Districts will do? The city, the newly-formed district, if formed, and the developer will enter into this CFD development agreement that specifies kind of the rules of the road and how everything will operate on a going-forward basis if the districts are formed. Those matters include things as Joel just mentioned, indemnification, additional deposits made by the developer to fund district operations before property taxes begin to be collected, and things of that nature. It also addresses property taxes. Although the city is familiar with the Water Utilities District of a CFD operating infrastructure, charging rates and user fees, these CFDs will be a little bit different. These CFDs will charge property taxes, collect those revenues, and then use those property tax revenues as security to sell bonds, and then use the bond proceeds to reimburse the developer and acquire infrastructure. The infrastructure will not be held by these two potential new CFDs. The infrastructure will either go to the city, to the sewer district, or to the water district. These cities are not, or these two Community Facilities Districts are not intended to own or operate infrastructure. They are financing mechanism to facilitate development and help the project move forward. One of the items, Joel, Joel kind of built me up to do math in front of you, so please have some numbers prepared if you'd like me to go through that. If you change the numbers, it may take me a moment to recalculate, so bear with me. But the general anticipated tax levy, there's two types of taxes that the CFDs are being asked to levy in the petition. The first is an operation and maintenance tax. That tax goes towards district operations. Each district will have administrative expenses. For example, per the statute, you're required to have a website, will procure insurance. When city staff puts on their district staff hat, then they are no longer functioning right for the city. They are working for the district at that point and would need to be reimbursed for that time. Now, or the city would need to be reimbursed for using that city staff person's time. Likewise, the districts will have other additional potential expenses. The second type of property tax will be related to bonds issued by the district. The district, again, will have the potential ability to issue general obligation bonds, which are backed by property taxes levied by the districts. So the two types of tax, right, operation and maintenance. The requested tax rate in the applications is 30 cents per $100 of net assessed limited property value. For the general obligation bonds, the requested property tax, little different in between the two districts. District One has requested a, a target tax rate of $3.30, and District Two has requested a target tax rate of $3.85. So the total tax rate in District One is projected to be $3.60, and the total tax rate in District Two projected to be $4.15. Now again, when the district sells bonds, per statute, the district is agreeing to levy property taxes at a rate unlimited by rate or amount. But what the district, the CFD development agreement does is constrain what everybody's expectations are so that the district won't levy, or won't issue too many bonds and then have to levy taxes at a rate higher than the target tax. The expected impact on a potential homeowner in District One is, including the, both, both types of taxes, is approximately $1,500 per year. And in District Two, the potential impact is a little bit less than $1,800 per year. Both districts have requested a potential total general obligation bond authorization of $400 million, and in their applications, they provide lists of infrastructure and estimates of costs on how that money will be spent. At this time, I'd like to be available for questions. The, the action on October 5th, again, three resolutions, following formation, if approved, the Mayor and Counsel has been, is the proposed Board of Directors of each of these new potential Communities Facilities Districts. And so, following steps, if formed, the Board of Directors of these two districts, we would schedule a first meeting at some point after, to appoint officers, call the elections as requested in the applications, and get the districts up and running.
Okay. Any questions? Brayden?
I was not going to go first this time, but I certainly could. I just want to clarify for the public as well that this, that bonding the $400 million for both sides and doing that with the property tax that will happen in this development allows growth to pay for itself. So our residents who live in current Apache Junction do not have a property tax put on by the city. Now, we have county and other things, but not by the city. So this new growth is paying for itself. There are going to be different tax rates even in, amongst the two districts than there would be in northern Apache Junction. So really, just wanted to more or less clarify that point.
Correct. Only potential residents living within either of these two districts would have the CFD tax, property taxes that I described. In addition, a potential resident will receive a variety of disclosures in their consideration of purchasing a home that they would sign, you know, should they so choose to buy a home in either of the districts.
Gail?
And this is just the typical formation of any annexation. Is that correct? There's really nothing extraordinarily unique about what's happening, correct?
No.
Okay.
Robert?
No. The only question I ever had was that these new homes, they'll, in their own, they'll have their own CFDs, just like we do up here for water and sewer, but what we have now won't apply to them, correct? They won't be involved in our sewer or water that we?
Yeah, I'll, I'll defer to staff. So the, they may not be within the boundaries of water, but, you want to do it, Joel?
Now, those two CFDs that we current, that are in the city, WACFID and SMUCFID, so Superstition Mountain Community Facilities District and Water Utility Community Facilities District. Yes, those are the service providers, and yes, they will have to, people that buy houses down there would have to pay fees to both of them for service. So yes, these are not two new CFDs that totally take over that process. No. No, these CFDs are financing mechanisms so that the developer recoups certain funds for infrastructure.
Krista, do you have anything?
No questions or comments, Your Honor.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you, Zach.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
That's it, Your Honor, thank you.
All right. So now, I'll read the, the resolution supporting Resolution Copper Equalization Payment Use in the Superstition Foothills Area. Matt?
And Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Matt Busby, Assistant City Manager. This item is very simple, it's for your consideration tomorrow evening. Pinal County has already adopted a similar resolution, and SALT, the Superstition Area Land Trust, has been working on that with them. The, the resolution is, is simply with support to keep the monies that Resolution Copper has to pay into the National Forest Service Region Three Southwest area, to keep that more local instead of that broader bucket of money, to keep it here, to preserve some of the lands that are currently state land, if the opportunity was to come in the future to, to auction those lands for conservation purposes. These are the main areas that SALT is proposing. This doesn't hardwire anything in, it doesn't guarantee anything, but it's showing support for that concept. And like I said, Pinal County adopted it, and SALT has asked you, as the Mayor and City Counsel, to consider this as well.
So it kind of leads to this, we've, we've adopted resolutions in the past in support of Resolution Copper. If there ever was that exchange, or land exchange with the federal government, this resolution is a support of, hey, those proceeds, let's reinvest those in an area near or around this proposed reserve, preserve.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions on this?
I will note that we put it on your consent item, so, for tomorrow evening, so if, if someone wanted to discuss it more, a council member could, could do that. Pull that from the consent item.
You know, it's something that a lot of people have wanted to do for many years, and of course, this is state land, which will still have to be purchased and brought into this protection plan. Okay. I will adjourn our meeting. Thank you.